Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. We'll call, everybody's here except for Rick and Heidi.
They both have commitments.
Any additions to the agenda?
No additions, but I would mention to the board that at the end of this meeting, you're gonna go into closed session for my evaluation, so I would suggest to the board that you do that, get everything completed until that evaluation, then go into closed sessions, and then that will save some time for everybody else, so they don't have to wait.
Okay.
And then we reconvene and then just adjourn.
Okay. All right, so we wanna adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
A second.
So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl, any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. District 741 is proud of, I don't have any of those on the dockets tonight. Public comment, anybody here for public comment? Okay, financial reports, June Treasurers' report should be in your packet.
Prove the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, we better approve, I'm moving right along too fast here.
Yeah, you were doing pretty good, yeah.
Approve and correct the minutes from the...
I'm gonna get outta here, no. I wanna get Bob's evaluation.
That's right. I know that she had a long list.
Approve and correct the minutes from the June 27, 2017 regular school board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second, I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Randy, any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. All right, financial reports, the June Treasurers' report should be in your packet. Bob, do you have anything?
No, not really, it's a little early, just a reminder that we still have the sale of the building there for the $53,000, and the Weaver investment looks like it went up a little bit, so that'd be about it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the June Treasurers' report.
Second.
I got a motion from Mark and a second from Lou, any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. I didn't approve of the bills, we have additional June bills of 2017 and the July bills of 2017. Cheryl?
I had a chance to go in and run through the bills, check them over, our construction is still going on with the windows, doors are being worked on and replaced, just pretty much all of the work that goes on during the summer to get ready for the fall, pretty much business as usual, I would make a motion to approve payment of the bills.
Just a couple of other things, just additionals, under additional June 2017 accounts there were three negative ones, those Cheryl and I need to talk about, and those are just voided checks, and then just be aware that in your packet you also have the activities listed every once in a while, you get those, so you can take a look at those at your convenience.
I'll second that motion.
So I got a motion from Cheryl and a second from Bruce, any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Consent agenda, we have...
A lot of items that we usually do during the, at this time during the year.
So, the first one would be review and consider approval of participation in the state and national school lunch program, the second one is review and consider authorizing the superintendent and his or her as a need to purchase and sell investments, third one is review and consider designating the school district supplement banking depositories for the 2017-18 school year, and that would be through the Minnesota School District Liquid Assets Fund and also the PMA financials that we use, number C is also the various banks and savings and loans across the United States, that's just other funds that they would probably be using, F and four, consider approval authorizing the following personnel for assigning of petty cash, and that would be the bookkeeper, payroll specialist, district office assistant, and the superintendent, review and consider designating the pencil presses our official newspaper, number six, review and consider designating the school district primary banks, we have payroll for credit union, we have the general accounts which would be for the Bank of the West and the activity as accounts was perennial banks, and number seven would be review and consider authorizing the following personnel for initiating authorizing bank transactions, that would be the bookkeeper, payroll clerk, district office assistant administrator, superintendent, and then community ed on that one, and then the last one would be number eight, review and consider listing the board chair, the board clerk, and the board treasury as pass signatures for the payroll and accounts payable checks. There you go.
These are all things that we have done at this time, and we'll continue to do these at this meeting.
I'll make a motion, should I say we adopt or pass the consent agenda?
I think that will work just fine.
Okay, what do you want?
Let's adopt it.
Okay, I make a motion, we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Item 1 to 8.
Okay, I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Randy, any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. We have a few things underneath business, again, anybody in the audience have any questions about anything on the business, please raise your hand, and I'll ask you to state your opinion about it, if not, we'll just proceed. First one, review and consider approval of the fee schedule for the 2017-18 school year.
And if it's okay with the board, I'll kind of go over this?
Yeah.
A, B, C, D are all remain the same, I did talk to Max, and we just feel like we're kind of in the middle of the pack, we're not at the top, we're not at the bottom, so we believe that we should leave those fees as is currently, so we're not asking for any increases there. I'm gonna let Theron and Cheryl talk a little bit about one of these, we've had the $50 instrument and the $40 percussion per year for the band instrument rental fees, but we're going to have a Smart Music fee for all of our students that I believe are in either choir or band, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's an $8 fee, I know a little bit about this software package, but I thought I'd let you explain to the board what that will do for you.
Sure.
Could you come down by the mic, please? Sorry, it's just easier for the audience to hear you.
So, Smart Music is a program that both of us have used for many years, I've been using it a lot since I got here at Painesville, mainly in sort of a singularity kind of situation so far, it's been a program that I've had on my laptops in the classroom, and I've been able to use that in my lessons and in classes to incorporate both kind of a visual element to the music, and it's mainly, it's an assessment tool, so what happens is there are assignments or exercises that even the method books that I use in classes, all these are part of the Smart Music library, and it keeps growing every year, and so I can assign exercises through this program, and students can play along, it kind of gives them a play-along track, practice track, they play along with the exercise, and then on the screen they see after they finished the red notes, green notes, what they got correct, incorrect, and it gives them a percentage of you got about 70% of the notes, or you got about 100%, that kind of thing, so it adds some other styles of learning as well, which is helpful, plus it also, it's almost like a game to the kids too, it kind of fits in their culture, they're so used to video games and phone games, you name it, that it sort of becomes a game to them too, and they try to get better each time and that kind of a thing. But this year, a couple of things kind of came together, the Smart Music itself decided to kind of redesign their program as more of a web-based program, which works very well with the new Chromebook rollout that we're using this year, and so it seemed the perfect time, you know, now that students are going to have one-to-one access with Chromebooks, to be able to use this other side of Smart Music, which is more of the gradebook assignment style, and the best thing I can relate it to is the Google Classroom that all the teachers are gonna be using this year, through Google Classroom you set up a virtual classroom of students, and you can send out assignments, et cetera, well with Smart Music, you can send out playing assignments, it's more geared towards music, so of my exercises in the book, I can send out, I want you to work on this exercise by Thursday, and they can play it on their computer, they can see how well they did, and they can submit it back to me for assessment, and so like I said, it just seemed a perfect time to utilize that program on the Chromebooks and get that one-to-one access, in the past the subscription was like $40, it was more extensive, the students had more freedom with that subscription, but they have revised their whole package, and now it comes down to only about $8 a student, and that's for an entire calendar year, and they'll have access to anything that we would assign them as teachers, so I think it's a really great opportunity, it gets that technology involvement right in their hands this year, and we're excited to try it out.
Cheryl, anything you want to add?
They also have my sight-singing that I use, they also have that book on there, so I'll be able to give them assignments, so they can practice their sight-singing at home, they also have solos, so the high school students, if they have solo that can be accompanied by Smart Music, they can actually use their Chromebook to help accompany, so there are some different options that hopefully Theron's gonna help me learn more of the options. There are more than I have, but we're having a special session, a Theron Technology session later this summer, so he can help me work on it.
Yep, sounds good.
Any questions for either one of them?
So our cost from last year to this year would be $8 a student?
Right, the only thing that's changing this year is that, because in the past students haven't had personal access to it, they've just used it in the classroom.
So, is it mostly used during the school day?
Uh, no, well that's the other good thing.
Now it will be able to be used outside of the school day, because they'll have their Chromebook.
Yeah, they'll be able to use it at home.
It'll fill up in the school day, and it'll be used out of the school day also.
Right, yep, anytime they can log into their Smart Music account and see their assignments and play at home using their Chromebook, yeah, both in and out of school.
So when we put together the Chromebook program, did we put in there the charge for any of the software we have to buy for any of the classes?
Um, no, not at this particular point, it's going to be just a rollout of the one-to-one, this is something new that has come up, because although Theron and Cheryl may have used it in the classroom itself, the kids didn't have access to it outside of the classroom, now with the Chromebooks coming out, they'll be able to, but it's a new thing for us, as the one-to-one comes out, certainly we'll start talking about software and all those other incidentals that we may look at incorporating, because we now have Chromebooks in the hands of our students, but it's going to take some time for all of this to shake out as we go down that road.
And what's nice about this is it's not, it's different, because it's not actually, this new program, what they'll have is not actually a program on the computer, right? Since the Chromebook is web-based, it's simply they go on the internet on their Chromebook and log in as you would log into any other site on the internet.
They'll have their own code, that says, they're able to...
Yeah, once we purchase the subscriptions, yeah.
So all of the classroom things that we have set up for this year to operate off of that, are we incurring any cost for those classes?
For the most part, it won't, but they'll be using things from the web-based here in school, and they'll be able to load some things up the Chromebook, take it home, for instance, if they don't have access to internet, but again, as we start to purchase more curriculum, you will see the teachers, instead of buying classrooms full of books, you'll see them buy subscriptions to the book that they can load off the internet.
But we're not gonna be passing the cost on to the student?
No, not for the most part, this is a little unusual in that, it's an addition for the students to be able to use better, but a normal book thing, and in the end, when we hit the music curriculum cycle again, they may choose at that point to put some of those dollars towards curricular areas into this, I think they'll have to kind of shake it out and let's see how it works, this will be new for the teachers too to have, their students have access all the time to be able to improve.
Right, one thing I forgot to add too is band and choir students only have to give one subscription.
So if they're both band and choir, they just have to pay?
Yeah, so they're only paying, so that's a nice thing.
How many, how many students are we talking about roughly?
What number did we come up with, is it like?
300?
Yeah, about 300 or so.
Because it's grades, it's...
Right, so thinking, yeah, 6 through 12, yeah.
So $2,400, computing that correctly?
Yeah.
I think it was 300.
Yeah, about, yeah, again, considering that, you know, if they're in band and choir, they'll only have to pay that one subscription.
So my only question, the only reason I bring up the question is if it's curriculum for the school day as compared to extracurricular, right?
Well, this is curriculum that could be used in and outside of the school day.
I would, yeah.
But so will all the other classes be able to, because they're taking the Chromebooks on, so there's really not any difference, but if it was used for all extracurricular as compared to being part of the program?
Yeah.
And you're saying that we pass the charge on until they analyze when they don't buy music and are gonna go to something like this, is that the trade?
This year, they're not in their cycle to purchase, so it would be, it would be something that I certainly have not accounted for in my budget. Now, when it's their curricular cycle, I guess we'll have to talk about, and they'll have to discuss how best to use the dollars they receive.
And all of the fees that we charge are based upon the lunch program deal, right? So people that may be close would have to pay this?
I would say that if a student or family runs into an issue, they should contact the instructors, and we'll certainly work something out.
I think for most people, I don't think people will generally object $8, but we also have a district full of people from all areas, and so we wanna be careful.
Yeah, when that happens, we'll certainly direct them to the instructors, and we'll discuss it and come up with something that we can...
Are you gonna base any grades or anything on what you are gonna be implementing?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the plan, to have...
It's how they assess.
Right, it's...
It's a tool that you're using to assess, at first I was pretty comfortable with when Bob had made this year, but after hearing what you're actually gonna do with it, this sounds like a curriculum-based program, and if it's truly a great thing, it's only $2,100, I know I can only say it's $2,100, but, and I know you're gonna say, if you're gonna take from Peter to Rob, I just, we really, I mean, I don't know if I'm in a position to say tonight, to say, yes, we are going to adopt this year, because, I don't know, you posed a pretty good question of...
Well, you're kind of like the technology committee, I mean, what was really the intent of our one-to-one?
Well, it was basically to be able to have access to a lot of the stuff on their computers, but once you start adding, this is a different twist though, that I believe in some retrospect, because they're using a program to actually assess a student on their ability to do different functions with instrument or voice or whatever, and if that is truly a tool that we are trying to assess, then how can we pay, or how can we have somebody pay for something like that? If this was just a program that you're gonna use to help the student get better, that's one thing, but if you're actually assessing the person or the student on a grade that potentially can have it, now you're pushing the envelope into somewhere other area that I would not be comfortable saying that we should be charging a student for, I don't know, I'm just thinking all out, because this is just something new to me.
Well, this is brand-new to this fee, that's why it's on the agenda.
There are those two sides to the program, I mean, obviously as musicians, we want our students to practice, I mean, that's part of what we expect, and you know, definitely in my case, I can put a method book that I'm using on the program, and they can use that to practice, it's a practice tool, does it also assess them and give them a percentage on how they're doing on those things? Yes, I mean, I would love if all the students, if they had this program to use it and use it as a practice without having that assessment requirement, but it's more of kind of a checkpoint thing, you know, I could see, and it does have both sides to it, it is a good tool just to use for practice and just to have that sort of...
Same thing with choir.
Right.
Technology side of things, too. Where they can actually, I haven't used this part yet, but where they actually have song, and they can pull out the soprano part and practice their own part along with soprano line, without having to be there playing the parts, so they're gonna be able to use that type of way, as well as on their solos, it plays their line along with the accompaniment, so it's a way for them to learn their...
Right, and same thing, they keep adding band literature as well, you have more and more band pieces that again, I can, you know, they can practice their actual part in the piece at home with their very own background band.
Because we're actually telling them they have to have it then, basically.
That's, yeah, that's, I mean, to have that subscription, they need to, you know, they would have to have that $8.
But it's not an option for them, they have to have it.
That's the way we're approaching it.
That's the way you're approaching it, okay. What are other school districts doing with this program? Are they charging?
It's new, I think this is the first year they've had this as the option.
Right, this new, right, this new form, and like I said in the past, it was more of a hard copy program to the computer, I think from other school districts that I've talked about, either the families would just pay for it themselves, but I know many, many districts or schools that use it as a grading tool, where that, how that, or how those subscriptions are paid for exactly to those schools that are using it as a grading tool, I don't know, I haven't...
So you're not sure if they're charging students for that?
It used to be $40 a student, so they really made it.
Right, right. They have changed the price.
Beable for everybody involved, but again, I think if we, my stance would be if we're using it as a tool to get a grade, and we're basically, you're telling them that they need to have it, then we should be paying for it, that's just where my, that's where I'm at, whether, however you approach it, or however you financially can swing it, I don't know, I'm just saying that, that's just my...
Just write him a check, is that what you're saying?
It's where I said too, that was the only reason for the question, when I saw it, I figured it was something extracurricular, like if you go to something extracurricular, yep, they're renting their equipment, I can understand that, that's a very common thing, but lots of this has to do with other things, and then, I just, I, and until we got here, I actually didn't realize, and I apologize, I didn't call you about it earlier, Bob, I didn't realize it was tied with the one-to-one, and I have a kind of an uncomfortable zone there too, if it's for school, I think we have to look at it slightly differently.
I don't disagree to some point, but there's a thousand things, teachers will come to me and say, you know, this is great for my students, but there's still a limit, because, and the point may be this, is that either the school pays for it, or you don't have it, that certainly might be one of the possibilities that could happen, because it is still all about budget, and I'm a little reluctant to start going down the road too much, just because it's not their curricular era time, if it was their curriculum time, but I can have every one of my teachers come in and tell me that there's a great thing they would like to implement, and it's not their year to do it, I'm not against tabling this, so at this point, at least with the reluctance, I would say let's take it off the piece, one of two things will happen, either Bob will find the dollars to do that, or really one of three things, or Bob will say, there aren't any dollars, and they'll have to wait to implement this, or I'm also gonna check on the legality, because there's a piece with the curriculum, now that I understand it a little bit more too, that there are certain things that you can charge students for, there are certain things you can't, and I'll double-check on this one, and it's just as possible that I may come back and say, I've double-checked on this, it is within the right of the school district to do this, and at least you'll know at that point...
Right.
...that it's a legal thing for us to charge our students, if it doesn't come back at all, then you can assume that we thought of better, and that we'll find, we'll have a discussion with our music department and decide what we're gonna do, the board fine with that?
Also, like when they have their list of things that they need to buy, you know, we don't have notebooks, you know, or there are certain classes that need notebooks, or need calculators, or need things like that, but this is kind of like our kind of tool, instead of taking notes in class, they're actually using it...
Because we do require calculators, it's on the list of that kids need, and we don't supply all those fancy calculators for everybody, you know, so it could be looked at as something like that, let's take it off for now, and I'll be in contact with you two, or Lori, one of us will work it out, I know she's gone right now, but, and then we'll have a discussion about it, because it's software-based, I'm assuming it doesn't take too long to set it up.
And I think it's a great thing, I wish I had it when I was in band.
Yes, me too.
Well, and we want to make use of these Chromebooks...
Right.
...to absolutely the fullest we possibly can, so it doesn't look like some toy that we picked up for everybody.
Yeah, just be aware, it will take us time to get to that point where everything is being electronically distributed.
I hear you say also, Bob, my impression is we have a timing issue here, so this is coming up at a time when most of the planning is already in place.
Well, this is coming up, I wasn't aware of this when budgets were put together, this was something that I didn't know the music department was looking at, so when we started talking fees, that's when it came up, I have no issues double-checking things to make sure that, number one, we don't wanna charge our students for something that we can't, and now I have a better understanding of what the software piece is about and how they're gonna use it, so we'll find that out, number one, can we do it, and if we can, then it may come back, if we can't, then we'll have to have a discussion about where we wanna go from there.
We still have the one in the classroom?
For right now, we do, it's, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so in other words, if we can't make it fit the budget, and we have an uncomfortable zone of actually charging somebody for this, I hate to put stuff off, but if it delayed a year, so it actually hit the planning process, you think that, I would hate somebody not to go up because it's another $8, because the one thing you gotta remember, some of these parents are putting, working on money for a whole bunch of stuff here, it's not just like, is it $8 added to $500?
And even if it doesn't go, or whatever, at least there's an option out there, so that if I as a parent would like to see that, my student have that as a tool, and I wanted to do that, but as long as it's not tied with the grade or anything, you know, that, you know, but you'll figure that out, but I mean, there could be other options for some of the students that you could still point them in the right direction, get them something like that and help them.
I'll update the board at the next meeting in August.
If possible, I'd like to see it implemented, it sounds like a great program.
Yeah.
He does an awesome job, like, I think he's doing his lessons this week, if you wanna stop in during the lesson?
Yeah, I mean, and I wouldn't mind doing a demonstration too to show you, but, you know, we can figure that out.
I don't think anybody's arguing that this is a good thing for our students, I think we'll figure out where we need to go from there.
Logistics.
Because I can see you'd have an issue, Bob, if after the budget's all set, and everybody's all set, and a whole bunch of ideas come, then it could become an issue.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we can't make that happen.
It's not so much this one incident, it's what, to some degree, opens up.
Generally, open, open, pick it and stick it on into it.
It certainly can, because I do know that there's, all of our teachers do wonderful things, and they can all, they all have great ideas on what they can do, but sometimes they don't have the budget to do it sometimes, so we'll get more information, like I said, I will update the board on this one way or another next board meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna move on to lunch fees, as you know, that for reimbursement and stuff, we are continuing, do need to raise our fees up to a certain thing, I think it's around $260 that we need to get to at least, and that kind of is a moving target too, that it continues to go up, so we are raising our costs of our lunches and breakfast for all people for, by 10 cents, okay, and I think that's appropriate to do, we haven't raised the breakfast piece for a while, so we're just gonna go 10 cents all the way to keep that going, any issues or concerns with that? Technology insurance, it is voluntary, we are looking at $50 per student per year, maximum $150 per family, I think that's kind of it, I think, we had discussed about whether we wanted to have a sliding scale, I think at this point, I think we'll leave it, at least I'll recommend that we leave it as is, just to see how it shakes out, the parents do not have to take it, it is voluntary insurance, they can use their homeowner insurance if that works better, or whatever other insurance they come up with, but I do think we need to go down that road, I think certainly if we run into a family that is really, and has a difficulty, I will leave that in the hands of my principals to deal with that, on how we wanna proceed to make sure that they're covered and it's affordable for them. Concerns on that one, because that's kind of the other new one that's on there, and that's strictly because of the one-to-one.
Have we talked to some parents?
I think Eric has during his meetings.
That was down with the parent surveys earlier this year, and they felt comfortable that he's also pretty much the same baseline as what other districts have been doing. as what other districts have been doing.
But the parent survey was a computer-based survey.
Yes.
Correct, so there was nothing sent out to people?
It, it's been in news articles, it's, it's been talked to, at registration, it'll be gone over with the public again. Certainly, we do want to have an insurance program that's available to the parents.
Yeah, and I, I understand the insurance program, I'm just curious if.
I think they even had it at one of the card days or the.
They, they, they have talked about it in various ways, I think, up at the secondary building.
Yep, we, we were in here during November conferences, for any questions that you had.
And like I say, our intent is not to prevent people from having it, and certainly if, if there's a family that needs to have a discussion, we'll work through that, our principals on that.
Does most homeowners' insurance cover laptops?
I, that I don't know.
If they don't schedule it on their policy, they have their deductible to deal with, most homeowners have a thousand dollar deductible, so they're going to buy the whole computer. If they schedule it, I actually ran one, and it's about the same price as buying an insurance from school. With a zero or ten dollar deductible or something like that.
And there is a cap on, on the family, so. Anything else, staff? Any other questions from the board?
Am I missing something, are you guys finding that forty dollars on here, I'm missing that?
Forty dollars.
Yeah, that, or the insurance.
Fifty dollars.
Fifty.
Fifty.
It's on G, on the backside sheet.
Technology.
Yep, technology, insurance, voluntary.
Well, something must be really beyond me on my computer, because I'm stopping on the meals.
Yeah, it's after the adult à la carte. Do you have the adult à la carte? The rest can see it on yours?
Is it all straight up and down?
Did you open the document, or sometimes if you don't, of course, on the Chromebook?
Yeah, I opened it up and I downloaded it, when I got there. Yeah, well, there's a little bit to it, I, I was thinking maybe there's a second page, or you flip this page, but I, I don't seem to be able to get it.
It puts after F. He's right.
He, so it stops after?
Yeah, I stop in F, and then I go to, so I don't have any other rest you're talking about.
Exhibit A is just one page, but the back page, the back page is missing, did I do a double-sided and have to scan both sides?
Well, I'll make sure I cover everything on the backside.
Okay, I just thought I.
Yep, the back, the backside has the lunch fees for the middle and high, middle, middle school, high school, six through twelve. And that's going from two thirty-five to two forty-five. They all, for an extra entree, that's staying the same, milk staying the same, reduced price still remains at zero. The adult is going from three sixty to three seventy for a meal, then an extra entree, a buck fifty, remains the same, and milk remains the same at forty cents. Then breakfast fees are going from one ten to one twenty for a meal, milk remains the same at forty cents, all kindergarten free and reduced price students, breakfasts are free. Middle and high school, six through twelve, breakfast is going from one thirty-five to one forty-five. Again, that's for one meal, forty cents for a milk, and additional milk. All free and reduced price students, breakfasts are free again. And then adult à la carte is going from one seventy-five to one eighty-five for a meal, and forty cents for a milk, and that's additional, and that remains the same. Then we have the technology insurance, which is voluntary, fifty dollars per student per year, maximum one hundred and fifty per family per year. Okay, then the school district meal allowances all remain the same, at breakfast, seven dollars, lunch, twelve dollars, and dinner, sixteen. The only time this really becomes an issue for the most part is when, when you're in the cities at some kind of workshop, then I'm not quite sure it's quite enough, depending on where you're at. But at least for now, we're going to remain, it's going to remain the same. Mileage, as long as gas is kind of staying where it's at, I don't see a reason to move that up from forty-six cents. Student athletic plus out-of-tone activities, the minimum number of students provided is thirty bucks, or thirty students per student, and the per-person cost is, will be the actual cost, so it's always divided amongst the students, so, depending on how many students go, would depend on how much, how much they charge. The substitute teachers, we've raised everything as far as our subs. Okay, we just have to, we're just not able to find them. For substitute teachers, I really question this one, I did move it up five dollars from one oh five to one ten. Okay, and then, one ten to one fifteen per day for those subs that go beyond ten days. Quite frankly, I'm not sure it's enough. We'll go up that way, and we'll kind of see where everything falls in place. We may have to raise that in, in the future. I think, we're kind of raising it up to where people are now for the most part, but of course, they're going to raise it also possibly, so we'll wait and see how that all shakes out. If I find out how this is going even before the school year, I might come back to the board. It's my one that I'm really concerned about, substitute clerical staff going from ten to eleven, raising that one dollar. Custodian substitutes from ten fifty to eleven fifty, paraprofessional subs from ten to eleven, food service substitutes from ten to eleven, and van driver subs from ten fifty to eleven fifty, so I added a dollar to all of the subs per hour. And those are kind of the changes, like I said, my biggest concern right now with this is my teacher subs, because we're having a harder and harder time finding them, and it may be necessary to raise it more.
I have one more question, on the rollback technology, for one, one moment, how much do they, what is the cost of them? Each one, wasn't it two hundred and eighty dollars? Yeah, what if somebody had one that was totally destroyed, that didn't have any insurance, what's their exposure?
Average cost would be about twenty, fifty dollars.
Okay.
And there's, there's a scale on this too, if, if they have a major thing the first time, the insurance covers it, but if it's the second time, then we would expect another payment, all the way up to the point where they would have to replace it. You know, if, if these, the pieces that they're getting really, if they take care of them, will last.
So, one, I hate to keep asking so many questions, but just personally, I've always found if you carry it in something, it's, it's better. Like in a sheath or something, are we going to have a list where parents could find them, or at least a suggestion, and say, listen, they're buying this thing, if you want to buy, well, so, I carry mine in this, it wasn't designed for it, but I was on the, looking, and there's some stuff out there, and you guys will know better what they would need, but just a suggestion. Maybe people will be hesitant paying nine dollars, so when they turn it back in, it doesn't even have a scratch in it.
I think one of the things they could do is at the meetings that they're going to have with parents on that, they could certainly talk about.
But if you can be suggestive enough, so people at least have an idea about it, look for that stuff.
I think they could do that very easily at, at the meeting that they hand them out. I'm sure we could have some examples thereof. Because the sleeve itself wouldn't be real expensive, my concern with sleeves is that sometimes if there's not a way to fasten the top, they end up dumping out of the sleeve, which can be troublesome. So, but we can do that at, at the meeting.
Yeah, I've just, we want to be as helpful as we can, it's customer service. We're giving them a brand-new computer, just tell them other things that could make it a little more comfortable for them, and I would think that'd be one of them.
Any other questions? Then I guess I would look for a motion to accept the fee schedule with the elimination of the eight-dollar fee for the smart music.
So moved.
I got a motion from Lou, and a second from Bruce. Any other further discussions? Hearing none all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number two, review and consider approval of the membership with MSBA Minnesota School Board Association for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
The addendum has the information as far as cost and what has gone up, I would certainly recommend that we stay with this, it's been a great organization. One of the best benefits that I see is the, the workshops that are available to board members. And then also the policies, we're part of the policy piece, so I would certainly strongly recommend that we continue to go with MSBA.
I'm hoping to renew our membership with MSBA.
And I'll second that one.
I got a motion from Cheryl, and a second from Bruce, any other further discussions? Hearing none all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number three, review and consider approval of our membership with C M E R D C for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
Again, this is a, a resource that we use, they help us with, or support our Mars, finance, payments, trainings, it's a good organization, they've done a good job for us.
Who to approve?
Our motion from Lou.
Second.
Second from Randy, any other further discussions? Hearing none all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number four, review and consider approval of a contract with C, no, with J Colton Inc.
You have the contract, Jim is going to retire, so this contract runs from July first to December thirty-first of two thousand seventeen, so at the end of December of two thousand seventeen, Jim will retire. So he'll be working about twenty-six weeks, and it'll be a cost of about twenty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars for four hundred and sixteen hours. It's along the same what we've been paying, and for the years, again, Jim helps us with maintaining our, our technology system, and everything that goes with it.
How long has he been with us?
Two thousand nine.
How long?
Two thousand nine.
We've put up with Jim not long? Oh, you haven't? I haven't. Yep, Jim's done a good job for us, we hate to see him leave, but the technology committee has talked about these next two contracts, so they're familiar. I also did, so that the board is aware, I did go over this with our finance committee, so they're aware of this, it did go to them before I came here. We believe, and I, I believe that this is the best way to continue our, our work on technology. Any questions on this, it's pretty self-explanatory, it's the same contract, virtually the same type of contract that we've had with Jim since he's been working with us. I would strongly recommend to the board that we approve this. Between the two contracts, because they kind of tie into each other, it really is being done at the same cost as it has been, well, was for last year.
That's what I thought when I looked at it.
Yep, there's really no increase in what it will cost us to get the same things done. Because they're tied in a little bit, once Jim goes, Jonah will take over in his contract, although he'll be working at the beginning, and I'll go through that in a minute, but he'll also be putting more hours in, so I think it's a good deal for the district. So one, one at a time, any other questions on Jim's contract? Then I just need a motion.
I'll make the motion. I have a motion from Randy.
I'll second it.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number five, review and consider approval of contract with J Stephen Jones LLC.
I think we've been really lucky, we've had Jim with us, working on our infrastructure and our technology for, since two thousand and one, and Jonah has come aboard as a student, and now he's kind of worked his way up. And really, I think we're very extremely lucky that as Jim goes on to a new adventure, we're able to bring Jonah onboard to continue what they have done. Jonah has really worked with Jim the last couple of years, even more.
Since tenth grade.
Since tenth grade, he probably knows our system as well or better than Jim does. Although I don't know if Jim would admit to that, but. What, what the term of this contract is, is for the year, starting on July first, two thousand seventeen, going to June thirtieth. It's a little different in that Jonah's just finishing up his schooling yet, so he'll put in sixteen hours from July first through December thirty-first per week. And then starting January first, when Jim is gone, Jonah will be putting in a minimum of thirty-two hours per week. It will shake out to an average estimated hourly rate of twenty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents an hour. And will come, his maximum piece on that would be thirty-seven, one hundred and twenty, and that does fit then into our budget for this last year and into the next year, it doesn't go up. Any other questions on any part of the contract?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion from Lou.
Second.
Second from Randy.
And there are, you know, either party can remove themselves from this contract, so be aware of that, there are clauses for both parties to be able to do it if things were not to work out well, but I have no doubt that they will.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number six, review and consider approval of the appropriate food service bids in the following areas. Dairy and bakery.
Yep, the dairy bids you have in front of you, we are recommending that we go to Kemp's. We did work with both Albany and Recore to get these bids, we kind of did it as a group, I think it gave us, gave us some good bidding power. We're recommending Kemp's for this particularly, the other school districts went with Kemp's also. It is a two-year bid, so next year we will not be bidding for the dairy, we will be bidding for the bakery though. What happened with the bakery is that the current one that we had bid, extended their contract one year. So, we're, we'll be with the bakery, the same group, for one more year, and that, I think it's a great deal, our price didn't go up there at all. Questions? So next year we'll bid the bakery, but we will not bid the, the milk until the following year.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And a motion from Bruce.
I'll second it.
Second from Cheryl, any other further discussions? Hearing none all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Personnel, review and consider approval of the resignation of Deana Fox Food Service effective July eighteenth, two thousand seventeen.
One of the things I would like to maybe just bring up at this point is that, really for these resignations, I'm going, we did talk about this at one of my superintendent's meetings, most of those all have these things on their consent agenda. They don't have it on personnel, particularly, I would argue that not only for the resignations, but also the hires, unless there's something unusual about it that you need more explanation. You always have the right to take it off the consent agenda, if you think that it's something that needs to be dealt with differently. But most, in fact, every, of the four, Albany and Sock and.
Melrose.
Melrose, they all did it that way, where those types of things are on the consent agenda. We're not doing anything wrong, if the board wishes to continue to do it this way, there's no problem with that. I'm just bringing it up as a suggestion, because particularly for resignations, what are you going to say?
On the consent agenda, you can still talk about something on there all, it just eliminates a pile of votes, and I'm totally in favor of moving it to the consent agenda.
Both, both the hires and, and the resignations?
Yeah, and the, do we have the ones where they're taking time off to have children? That needs to go there too, because I'm not sure how you would vote any different anyway.
Well, there's contract things that really, you know, and we already do the coaches on the consent, so I, I think I'm, I think that's good. I'll do some checking, there might be a few times when we're increasing hours significantly or something, that we decide to put it on personnel, because there's some things that we need to explain to the board.
I, I, that I would agree, I think if you're, if you're changing their contract to something different, then, then it should be.
Most of these are just filling, or filling a slot of a different resignation, and we're not increasing the hours.
But if we sit here and look at the consent agenda, and there's some questions about one of them, we could just vote for the consent agenda, not including that one, and decide on a separate, right?
Or you could just, during the consent agenda, when that comes up, if there's a question, I think there's nothing that says you can't ask.
Right.
Right at that time.
Well, then another argument would be, what would you put on any personnel then?
There would, there would be much less under personnel.
Yep, but what would you?
I think contracts will remain under personnel, you know, some of those things that you, you want to be very specific, I wouldn't put a contract under consent, there's got to be more discussion in that type of stuff, but contracts would certainly be under personnel. But quite frankly, there wouldn't be as much of anything.
Evaluation.
But we used to, used to be, when we first started, there was very little under consent.
Right.
You know, so the consent just allows you to get done with a, quite a bit of business very quickly. very quickly.
See, for me, I like that. I liked it when we have some of the instructors here, they put stuff on the board right during our meeting, to tell us a little bit what's going on. I have a son in the system, I don't really know what's going on, but these instructors come down and give us a little presentation, and it's ten minutes long, here's our ten minutes, and it doesn't take any more time.
Yeah, and I think...
Someone can just decide.
If we're changing hours, that might be another thing that we're bringing, put it under personnel, so that the board's aware of that, we're changing the hours, then why? But in the addendum, if we do it that way in the addendum, I'll try to give more information during, in the, for the consent piece, too. Any concerns with that, if I start to move that way?
No.
Okay. Sorry, review and consider approval.
Motion.
And a motion from Lou.
Second.
Second from Randy. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider an increase in Amber Kern's hours from six point two five hours per day, five days per week, effective September fifth, 2017.
These are really a replacement.
I'll abstain from the vote.
I got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number three, review and consider approval of the resignation from Holly Kern, paraprofessional, effective July eighteenth, 2017. Should I be abstaining with this, something like...
I think for something like that, I don't think, 'cause it's a resignation, and it's pretty straightforward that it's going to be approved. I don't think that's an issue. And quite frankly, the abstention, I think, is a good thing if there's any doubt. Certainly, people would say, "I'm abstaining," and then there's no doubt about it. But that type of thing, unless there's a monetary gain of some type, you would not have to abstain.
I'll make the motion then.
Okay, I got a motion from Randy.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval of the resignation from Samantha Akoff, paraprofessional, effective July eighteenth, 2017.
So moved.
Got a motion from Cheryl, and a second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number five, review and consider hiring of Kimberly Grabley, paraprofessional, for six point five hours per week, five days per week. Did I say that right? Okay, effective September fifth.
This is fulfilling Samantha's resignation, so...
So moved.
Got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider acknowledging the receipt of letter of retirement from Superintendent Robert Hewitt, effective June thirtieth, 2020? No, eighteen.
Eighteen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Shall we just go on to the next question?
Yes.
Well, we all knew this was coming.
We all knew it was coming.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I got a motion from Bruce, and a second from Cheryl. And again, this is a very hard one, because it just is. Everybody in favor of it, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried.
If we were to go to informational reports, then?
Yes, we will. Informational reports, Bob Hewitt.
Just a few things, I just, there have been questions that we've gotten on, reported of closing those gates. They are gonna remain closed. I did get a call from a community member, asked, who was with some of the community members' friends, and there was a debate on what is happening. So just to clarify, the gates are closed, both on Janata Road and the Lantrance Road. They will remain closed at this time, they will remain locked. They are not gonna open up at school at this point. They're gonna remain closed in the morning all the way through the date, so we're not gonna have somebody open them in the morning, then close them back up, open them in the afternoon, close them back up. We're not gonna do that. They're gonna remain closed unless we see some kind of major safety issue that it's creating in some other place. The main purpose for it, really, is safety of students, and also some wear and tear on the roads. It has been discussed with our fire chief, those are the school district's roads, those are not public roads, and the police chief. The fire chief, the only thing we talked about is that they will have a key to open those gates up. That's, one concern is that they wanted to be able to get in the gates if they needed to, and the police chief is also aware of it. We'll certainly monitor it as we go into the school year, and watch it as activities take place, to see how things go. So again, I would say they're gonna be closed until we see a reason that we need to open them up. All right? Any questions on that piece? We kinda went through this before, but just to clarify with the community. Elementary school windows, we continue to work on them. They're waiting for the windows, or the elementary windows, that whole section on the east wall of the elementary school. I think they're just waiting for the outside sheeting now, and the windows to come in, and then they've already worked on the inside of the building, some sheet rocking, there's still some work there that needs to be finished, but they're moving right along. I think when Cheryl looked at it, we've had our first bill on that project. We do intend to have it done by the time school starts, so we should be fine. Negotiations continue to move forward. We're very close to having solid agreements with everybody, and it's our intent, I think, and our hope, that we'll be, for the August, first meeting in August, that we'll have some contracts there to, for board approval, but we'll see. Some groups have to look at a few things yet. Next facility meeting, August sixteenth, six o'clock, the Elementary School Media Center. Main topic will be if we're going to do a project, and what might it look like. Custodians are working real hard to get the buildings ready. The elementary school project is gonna put some pressure on them to get done, so we may need to bring them in for a few extra hours to get caught up as we finish that project. We're starting to work on things for the gala. As a reminder, the gala, we're the focus of the 2017 Gala. It'll be held on September twenty-third at Lewis Industries. We'd certainly love to see a great turnout. Our focus is vocational career training. The theme is create a spark, ignite the possibilities, and certainly more information will come out to our community and parents and everybody else.
What's the starting time of that? Just kidding.
Not sure of that. I think, last time, I will get that information, I don't know if they've said it, or if it's the same, it seems to me it was around five or five-thirty last time.
I think so.
So, I'll certainly, as more information comes out. Just a reminder also to the board that the next meeting starts at five on August eighth, 'cause some voting. That's what I have.
All right, number two, Budget and Finance Committee, looks like I'm on the docket for that. Basically, there was a couple of us, or a few of us there, the biggest thing that we talked about was the contracts, and that's about it.
That was really the main purpose of it, we wanted to make sure that the Finance Committee itself felt comfortable with the contracts for the technology piece.
Number three, negotiations. Bruce, Vanderpool.
Everything's going along really good there. Like Bob said, we just have some contracts that they're finishing up, but I'd say we are pretty close on everything other than the admin group at the moment.
Yeah, we have, I think the only two that we haven't really met with, we met with this, we meet with the support staff tomorrow, and then the administrative group will start to meet with them, and then that's pretty close to it. So, and I don't think those two groups will take too long, neither, so we would certainly like to see things, as much as possible, take place the first August meeting, if not the second meeting in August, so... But they're moving forward well.
Okay, number four, any other board sharing information? Hearing none, we're gonna move back up to number seven. We're gonna move to closed session under Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero seven, subsection three A, to review the superintendency evaluation.
And right after that's open, or done, and certainly people are more than welcome to stay, if you want, and wait, but the only thing that will happen once we come back is that they'll reconvene and then adjourn. That'll be the only thing that takes place.